The November 18th, 2025 Regular Planning Commission is called to order. The time is 6:01 PM. Before we begin, Commissioners, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located in the back of the council chambers above the clock. Will the planning clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Seals?
Here.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Present.
Commissioner Langill?
Present.
And Todd Stafford did let us know that he would be out and is excused. So Commissioner Seals, you do have a quorum with Commissioner Brown, Langill, and DeYoung in the chambers.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner DeYoung, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare? If the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda such as the minutes, they need to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under new business at this time. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Chairman Seals?
Commissioner Langill?
Thank you. Following discussions with the Deputy Administrator, formerly Planning, Acting Planning Director, it was decided that three items on tonight's agenda need additional evaluation. Therefore, I will make the following three motions. As they are lengthy, I provided each of you a copy of the motions. First one is I move that the first item under Section 9, Introductions by Law Discussion, be taken off the agenda until the planner can review the proposed bylaws submitted to the Planning Department on October 13th, 2025. After review, they should be placed on the Planning Commission meeting agenda for December
Is there a second? Hearing none? Oh, go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
No, the second, then. You can ask a question.
So I wasn't here last week because I thought Tuesday was whatever, it doesn't matter. But was this discussed last meeting and I missed it? Okay, never mind. I was just curious, I didn't know. I'm not seconding that.
Hearing no motion, hearing no second, the motion is hereby denied. Go ahead, Commissioner Langill.
I move that the second item under Section 9, Introductions, the Museum of Alaska Transportation Discussion and Resolution received tonight be referred back to the Planning Department for final review and subsequent inclusion on the agenda for the December 9th Planning Commission meeting.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion is canceled. Go ahead with your next motion.
I move to remove the item under Section 10, Unfinished Business Agenda Discussion in order to give the Planning Department time to complete its review of the resolution and agenda submitted October 13th, 2025 before placing it on the December 9th, 2025 meeting
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion is denied.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I move we accept agenda as provided.
Do we have a second? Will the clerk call for a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Langill?
No.
Commissioner Seals, the agenda stands as presented with three approvals from the Commissioners.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are reports. Do we have a report from our Deputy Administrator?
Thank you, Chair. It's end of the month, kind of mid-month, but I was going to give you an economic development report. And so as of today, we have 2,983 businesses, business licenses that have been issued this year, and that includes temporary licenses that are for the Matsui Holiday Marketplace that's coming up, as well as closure of season accounts and noncompliant. And we have an additional 3,517 online business licenses, which is a positive 397 since February of this year. That's going in a good direction. We are doing our infrastructure tours now through the first quarter of '26, so we'll have our next one December 4th from 3:30 to 5:00. We're going to be looking at our sewer, water, library, and some of the commercial districts. If you are interested in participating in one of those tours, please let the Planning Department know, we have room for five people each time. The Alaska Municipal League will be meeting in Anchorage December 8th, and that's where all the cities get together. I will be attending, and so our new planner will be here to guide you through this storm. We have lots of new development going on. As you are driving around the city, you'll see that the construction is still continuing. We've got a new law office that is being built, a bakery, automotive shop expansion, a new transportation company out of Anchorage is moving there. They're going to have a satellite office out here. We have a new airport hangar expansion and a new coffee shop drive-through at the airport if you want to get a cup of coffee and go out to the airport. Two large retail stores are expanding their parking, and they're actually going to bring on some new services for some rental equipment. We've got a large plumbing, wholesale plumbing business that's expanding just north of the city, three new dental clinics, and the Wasilla Library is implementing an RFID program and also seeking funding to expand for this new book technology that they're putting in there. We had our first Yellow Brick Road Halloween event at City Hall this year. We all participated in the Land of Oz and came as different characters, and we had about 1,100 people attend, so we ran out of candy the first hour, which was kind of a surprise. If you haven't been to the Menard Center, please go out and see the new turf that has been put in and adding to that, we've done a lot of painting, and so it just looks really great in there. And our steering committee will be meeting on December 4th for the camp plan. They're going to be talking about recreational trails and also roads. As far as new business, we are still the only city, as well as Valdez, that have these restaurant beer and alcohol, beer and wine license, and we've had a few companies call us about that. Our airport funding for $3 million and the interconnect for $1.9 million is still in Washington DC. It is still alive. I don't know for how much longer, but we are crossing our fingers. And Title 16 is complete, and our new planner is onboard. That's my report.
Questions, Chair. What time was the tours on the 4th of December?
3:30 to 5:00.
I have one question, or one thing to ask of our Deputy Administrator so that we have a formal introduction. Would you please introduce our new planner?
I would love to, I'd be honored to do that. Next to me is Jennifer Hillier. She is our new planner, city planner, just relocated from Kansas and has got just a wealth of experience, new ideas, and I've asked her to personally introduce herself
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Hillier. I am, I've been here for, this is my second week here, so I'm just wrapping my head around the new Title 16 Land Development Code and familiarizing myself with Alaska statutes as they are different from Kansas. I think it's funny that I'm coming in on the tail end of the Oz Halloween, but not trying to go back, so no red shoes for me. But I do come with lots of planning experience with government in Kansas. I've done private as well as public service, and I am glad to be here and to be of service to this community and be back home.
Thank you very much. Do we have a report from our new city planner tonight?
No, not tonight.
Do we have, thank you, do we have a report from our city attorney tonight?
No, you do not.
Thank you. Next on the, next item on the agenda is the public participation. We are now at persons to be heard, a time for members of the public to share their views with the Planning Commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the commission or administration. Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. With no one wishing to speak, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Would the planning clerk please read the items for approval under the consent agenda into the records?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Under 7.1 minutes of preceding meetings, tongue twister, we have the regular meeting minutes for, oh, it's actually October 14th, yeah, 2025, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Commissioner Brown, I move to accept consent agenda as read.
Commissioner Langill, second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner Langill to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is new business. Will the planning clerk please read the agenda item under new business?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Our first item is Resolution Serial Number 25-12, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission establishing the regular meeting schedule for calendar year 2026.
Will the Planning Department please provide a report?
Thank you, Chair. This is in our code that each year we will distribute the calendar for the next year to the commission. Please note that in our code, it does specify that in December we have one meeting, and other than that, we do have two scheduled each meeting.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-12?
Commissioner Brown, I move to approve Resolution Serial Number 25-12, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission establishing the regular meeting schedule for calendar year 2026.
Commissioner DeYoung, I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner DeYoung to approve Resolution 25-12. Is there any discussion by the commission? With no discussion, will the planning clerk please call for a roll call vote to approve Resolution Serial Number 25-12, a resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission establishing the regular meeting schedule for calendar year 2026?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
Resolution Serial Number 25-12 is approved.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Under new business is public hearing. With no new items under public hearing, we move on to introductions. Oh, well, we are now at introductions. Will the planning clerk please read the first agenda item under introductions?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. The first item we have under introductions is discussion on approval of the adoption of Planning Commission bylaws.
Will the Planning Department please provide a report?
Thank you, Chair. This was put on the agenda tonight. It's something that Commissioner Langill has provided to the Planning Department for an analysis of how do we move forward looking at the bylaws? And per our code, the bylaws are outside the commission, but if the mayor would like us to work on the bylaws, then that is a task that the clerk and the administration can put forward to the commission. And this is something also that we've asked the planner to look at, the information that's been provided in our code, and maybe get some more information to you in the next, at the next meeting.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the commission?
Chair? I do have a question for the planner, the administrator, or the attorney. So we are not looking at the Planning Commission bylaws. The administrator has said that the commission, this is outside of our preview. Can you please quote to me or explain what code says the commission does not do their own bylaws?
I think it's normal, and I'm not super familiar with this. How's that?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Usually boards don't have their own set of bylaws, in my experience, although it's been in Wasilla. And I saw preparing for tonight, there's been a number of recent code changes defining the scope of what this commission is. Now, I understand there is training next month, which will help a lot, hopefully answer a lot of the questions. But as I read the code, there's specific things that the commission is charged with, and everything comes to the commission essentially in an advisory state to, you know, give wisdom, whether it's zoning variances, the various things regarding permits. All those things come to the commission of, you guys make a decision because you're going to get the public input, and you're going to make an advised decision. And then the other aspect is when it's quasi-judicial, there's an appeal of action by the department, and then that comes to you. The department does all the enforcement, and the council sets the policy. You're somewhere in between on that, and I think as I read the code, that they've done it to make sure you stay within that scope. You've got a lot of very important responsibilities, and the planning director with the city attorney and the mayor's office will provide the agendas. Now, you guys have the possibility of saying, we'd like to have something added to the agenda. You can always talk to the council or the mayor if you don't think that the planning director is giving you what you're looking for. But generally speaking, you know, you've got a very narrow scope, but with very big responsibilities. Hopefully that makes some sense.
Through this chair, I am totally confused. I really am. In 2004, the city actually considered bylaws from this commission, and it went forward, approved by the mayor, but the council never took action on it. In looking at state statutes and talking to Borough and a couple of other cities, every commission establishes their working bylaws. And I do not see anywhere in our code that this commission doesn't have that responsibility. But if that's the determination by the attorney, then there's no sense going through a process to bring bylaws to this commission until they are done by the council, if I'm understanding the process correctly.
I believe that's the way the process is, and again, you have training scheduled, and Ms. Wells will be setting that up or someone else who's, you know, very familiar with your whole history. But, you know, and that's the scope. And I don't know how every other city does it. Where I was city attorney and seored, they did not have bylaws for the Planning Commission at the time. Anchorage Planning and Zoning and Zoning Board Examiners do not have bylaws, but they're a whole different beast. You get a big packet, and you just go through it, and staffs put it together. Pretty narrow, so, but if the council wants you to have bylaws, you'll have bylaws. They want to expand the scope of your duties and responsibilities, they can do that as well.
Through the chair, how does this commission then request from the council to consider bylaws?
The normal route would be request through the Planning Department, ask the planning director to bring it up with council. You're also allowed as private citizens to, you know, talk to the city attorney or talk to the mayor or talk to council members and say, we really need this.
So it would be, again, through the chair, then it would be, our new planner would go to the council and request this from the council or the mayor? And I don't know how the mayor gets...
It would be, and, you know, the planner might move ahead on their own. They might ask the mayor, saying the Planning Commission would like a set of bylaws that includes this, that, and the other thing, and then they can move forward, they can put it on the agenda, give you a draft. You definitely could have a work session on it, but the code is very clear, the changes that were put in in 2024, it's the planner that sets the agenda, working with the city attorney and the mayor's representative.
Again, through the chair, then does this commission make a motion to have the planner work on this? Do we need a resolution requesting this? What is the process?
I don't, I don't think you have to have a formal process. You can just informally request it. If you do a resolution, it's technically not on the agenda, but that should be conveyed to the council, that the commission voted in a majority or the whole commission said they would like bylaws.
Well, I would be interested to see if the Commissioners, what bylaws or not. I personally feel that they are a wonderful tool for the commission to use, but if no one else agrees to that, which is very apparent, no one else does, then there's no sense having training, discussions, anything else. It's a mute issue.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Let me suggest to fellow commissioner, why don't you hold off on that thought until we go through the training and see what come out of the training? It may answer some of your questions, or it may move some of us to agree with your desire to have bylaws, but I would, I would friendly suggest that we hold off until the training. I think a lot of the questions that you may have will be answered during the training. Ms. Wells is very well versed in the city Wasilla policies and procedures.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. May I have a motion to end discussion and move this until after or during the training in the, in the month of December coming up?
Commissioner Brown, move that discussion about bylaws is tabled until we have the training and then decide whether to bring it up again at that point.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner DeYoung, we'll look at that.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner DeYoung to end discussion and move any further discussion of this matter until after or during our training next month.
That's a good idea.
With no further discussion, will, is there any more discussion? Sorry, I got ahead of myself. We need to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Yeah. With no further discussion, will the planning clerk please call for a roll call vote to end discussion and move this to after or during our training in December?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
Your motion is approved.
Will the planning clerk please read the next agenda item under introductions?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Item 2 under introductions is discussion on availability of city land for public purpose in regard to the Museum of Alaska Transportation.
Thank you. Will the Planning Department please provide a report?
Thank you, Chair. This is, pertains to a resolution that was submitted by Commissioner Langill, specific to the various comments and presentations that Matty has provided us. What the Planning Department does when we receive this type of legislation is we have legal look at it to ensure that it's something that falls within our preview to move the discussion forward. And so included in your packet is the resolution submitted by Commissioner Langill with comments and suggestions in blue, highlighted in blue from legal. So we wanted to make sure that all the Commissioners had the most updated information. This is, came from our legal on Friday last week, and I thought it was very appropriate to include it so you have all the information that you need. According to our legal advisor, most of the time resolutions don't come from the Commissioners themselves, but we felt it was appropriate to push this forward, this conversation forward, to see if there is something that you would like to move up to council and have council support it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the commission?
Chair, I do have another question.
Go ahead.
Okay. It was on the agenda, a discussion. In discussion with the Deputy Administrator past Acting Planner, I was advised that... In discussion with the deputy administrator past acting planner, I was advised that the planner cannot move or change the agenda once it's been published. But as a commissioner, I could, and it was suggested that I introduce this tonight. That didn't happen, so now where are we? I mean, again, I'm just totally confused.
Where are the options we have?
Commissioner, go ahead, city attorney.
Well, I mean, coming, you as the commission want a resolution, the planner can put it on the agenda, it needs to be introduced with public notice, and you can have public input, and then you can vote it up or down to send it on to the, to the council. I think that's what's going on here, honestly. It's kind of a...
Chair, can I just, just for clarification?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So we have to put this on the agenda a certain amount of days before we have the meeting. Because this suggestion came in from legal on Friday, I could not change the agenda, but I could recommend if Commissioner Langel would like to include this in the next meeting as a resolution. Now that it's been reviewed by legal, then that is the next best option for us.
Through the chair, I have a question. So, so let me understand, you want this to be on the next meeting of this, of the planning commission, to push it through to council? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, it would be scheduled for public hearing. Unless it's necessary to go to council before we have a public hearing.
I don't think so.
That's why I am totally confused. Either we have authority, we don't have authority.
No, I would like to see this on the agenda as soon as possible, but did we already, we already voted that down? I mean, I don't see why we can't move this forward.
It wasn't voted down, the changing agenda was, was just...
Yeah.
Was voted down at that time. Right now, there can be a motion to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, be that December 9th or whenever.
The chair.
Go ahead.
I'm sure a second can come back any time, but it's not an agenda change, this is...
Putting it on the next meeting.
Right, that was my understanding, that what was voted down was a change to the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes.
The resolution had no input to that, and this is an introduction, so all the council, all the commissioners get a chance to read this now, and then it would be on the agenda if we decide tonight for the next meeting for discussion in front of the public. We just can't discuss it tonight because it had not been introduced before.
Okay, good, because I want to put this on the next.
Right.
Okay. Fine.
Is that a motion?
I think we're all in agreement here, but now...
I think that's a motion that we want.
May I have, may I have a motion to have the city planner put this on the first available meeting with proper notice, so that we can work on this?
I motioned that. I motioned what he said. Yeah, I would like to see this move forward.
We just needed a second. There we go.
Yeah.
It has been motioned by Commissioner DeYoung, seconded by Commissioner Brown, to have the city planner put this on the first available agenda that she can.
And question, would that be our December 9th meeting?
It's only two weeks in.
Yes, we're on the December 9th meeting. It will be on the agenda for December 9th.
Thank you.
Well, with no further discussing, discussion, will the planning clerk please call for a roll call vote to move the motion forward?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Langel?
Yes.
The motion to move this discussion and draft resolution on the availability of city land for public purpose in regard to the Museum of Alaska Transportation to the December 9th meeting is approved.
We are now under unfinished business. Will the planning clerk please read the agenda, agenda item under unfinished business, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. We have under unfinished business continued discussion on updates to the planning commission agenda format.
Will the planning department please provide a report?
Thank you, Chair. So this is legislation that came before you at our last meeting. It was recommended by legal that we separate out the legislative part of the agenda from the quasi judicial. So people in our audience, the audience is very well aware that this is the time that you speak, whether it's a rezone or a permit that's going to be approved, but because there's a little bit of confusion, we would have a specific section for quasi judicial. We included it in your packet for another review. If you want to move this forward, that would be the vote tonight, and if not, we would just put it in a grave.
Is there any discussion by the commission?
I don't feel good, so I guess my very...
Commissioner Brown, I move, Commissioner Brown, I move that we accept the changes to the agenda format to the commission.
Commissioner DeYoung? Separate it.
Commissioner Langel, again, I'm totally confused. The one, the items that's on our agenda, the agenda format, Resolution 2511 and Attachment A, was before this commission. It died for lack of a second. And again, I'm going, I need attorney. When something dies for a lack of a second, isn't it dead, mute?
No, it, it's not mute. It can come up at a different meeting or a different part of the agenda. Are you talking tonight when you asked to take this off the agenda or move it? Or was this, it died for lack of a second at the planning board meeting?
No, when this came up, this item came before the mission.
Okay.
It died for a lack of a second. Resolution 2511. You can look at it, it says right on it, no second denied.
There was no second, it was never introduced. It could be introduced.
Pardon?
Because there was no second, it wasn't introduced, it wasn't actually failed. It's in an interesting spot. I mean, you could also have reconsideration, too. But often motions come up, and then they're not officially tabled, but they're reintroduced later, the same motion.
Through the chair, question to one of you three over there. Then on October 13th, I submitted a resolution, draft resolution, and an item for this agenda. So we are bringing forward an agenda item that didn't receive a second. We will not even consider what I submitted?
We did consider it.
Pardon?
We did consider it, and it didn't get seconded.
Well, he just said seconds.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, maybe I'm confused, but Robert rules say if you put a motion on the floor and it doesn't get seconded, the motion just goes away like it never happened. There was no action, so you can bring that motion up a thousand times later to see if you get a second. I just brought the motion forward and got a second, now it's up for discussion now.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, can I get you, please, to restate your motion?
Okay. Commissioner Brown, I move Resolution serial number 2511, a resolution of the City Wassilla Planning Commission approving updated planning commission agenda format.
And we had a second?
Commissioner DeYoung, second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner DeYoung to add the 2511.
Planning Commission agenda.
There we go. A resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission approving updated planning commission agenda format, whereas, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Will the planning clerk please call for a roll call vote?
Yes, I do have a clarifying question, though, as the planning clerk, is the resolu, the motion to adopt the previous, this previous agenda format that was used as an example here, or as a reference attachment? Or is the motion to create a new resolution with the same agenda format?
I will amend my motion to adopt the sample documents that's attached to the motion to show the split out between the, the two different kinds of hearings we have.
Do we have a second on the amended motion?
Separating the legislative from the quasi judicial.
I second. DeYoung seconds.
It has been... Amended, the motion has been amended by Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner DeYoung to adopt the 2511 resolution separating the legislative and the quasi judicial on our agenda format. With no further discussion, will the planning clerk please call for a roll call vote to do that aforementioned thing? To separate the, the quasi judicial and the legislative on our format.
Okay, is that good?
Legislative versus quasi judicial, yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Langel?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
We are now at communications. Would the planning clerk please read the items for approval under commu, under the communications into the record?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Under communications, we have 11.1 permit information, permits and licenses issued October 8th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025. And we have enforcement log, code violations, October 8th through November 11th, 2025. And then the Matsuburu Planning Commission agendas for October 20th and November 3rd, 2025.
Thank you. We are now, we now move to audience comments. We are now at audience comments, and time for members of the public to share their views with the commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission? Please write your name and contact information on the sign up sheet. When you are finished, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
I'll write fast.
We're not going to start your timer until you're done.
Kathy Cottles, Wassillo City Council. I just wanted to encourage all of you, if anyone has not been going on these infrastructure tours, to really encourage you to do it. I went on Friday for the museum, the old, the old town buildings. We went out to the Transportation Museum also with the city planner, the deputy administrator, Commissioner Seals and I, we all went out there. I would suggest what, go on all the infrastructure tours, because every time you go on one, you're going to learn something you didn't know, even though you think you might know so much about our infrastructure. Our infrastructure in the city is so drastically important, and we always need to be looking at it and what we need to do to either upgrade or move forward or change. And being able to see things firsthand makes a huge difference, so I just want to encourage all of you to make sure that you go on these tours whenever they're available. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to comments. Does the deputy administrator have any comments tonight?
I just have one comment, and it's, it's relative to the infrastructure tours. So we got notification by DEC that our request for a $75,000 grant to update our water master plan and another $75,000 to update our sewer master plan, and 262,000 for tank replacements qualified for the funding available through the, what they call the DEC revolving loan fund. Once they give us notification, then we have to submit financial assessments and some reporting to them, and then we come back. They will send terms and conditions that we'll bring back to the council for final approval. But I think it's really important that you go out and see where our water and our sewer and some of this really critical infrastructure is, where we are today, where we're going, and it's these little small wins that really matter, because the master plan has not been updated since 2000. A lot has happened since then, and it's just, it's, it's really important to, to have a 20-year vision. So, small wins count, and hopefully we'll have some bigger wins as we move, but the sewer and water right now are really, really important. Thank you.
Your time's up. Does the city planner have any comments this evening?
No, do not.
Thank you. Does the city attorney have any comments this evening?
Yes, just shortly, I apologize for a bit of the confusion or adding to it. I think we've got some rules changing here. I sense at least one newer commissioner. I'm, of course, coming in out of the blue in the middle of it, and we've got a new planner coming in. I think everyone's really all on the same page of trying to get these things right. And it was only late in the meeting I really understood what Holly had said to me, what she was really getting at. And, you know, what's happening here is the city and the attorney's office are trying to be very careful to break out the quasi judicial and the legislative, so the city doesn't get in trouble. Those are very different things. Quasi judicial, you put on the hat like a judge, and you can't talk to the parties, and you can't go get other information. Legislative, you're a citizen, listen to the rest of your citizens to figure out what is just kind of the best thing, now whether the rules were broken or not. So, very different things, and I, I think everyone's really going the same place, and it'll come all together, and I'm glad you're having training in December, and I think that'll bring things together.
Thank you for those words of wisdom. Commissioner Brown, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I do. To the city administrator, do you provide snacks on your tour?
What?
Bottled water. Yeah, bottled water. Although, on Friday, it was a special day, we went and had a cup of coffee. I paid for it out of my own pocket. I paid for it out of my own pocket.
I witnessed the whole thing.
Well.
And the coffee was good.
Well, I went last year and I didn't get water nor coffee.
Discuss that at the next.
I don't care what they say, I'm not drinking that water. You can't make me.
Commissioner.
No comments.
Commissioner Langill, you have any comments?
I would like to welcome the new planner. Hopefully with the training coming up, we can start a new year. Everybody on the same page, same understanding. So with your expertise, it's going to be appreciated, and I look forward to it. I want to thank Neversure Deputy Administrator, previous acting planner, for all of your help in this past months in trying to cover all bases for the city. It is truly appreciated. Thank you.
Commissioner DeYoung, comments?
Just want to say thanks. And then, I do have one thing. So can we get more information on the permits? We keep asking for it, and she brought in a nice one that actually has information from 2024, or 21, sorry, 21. It'd be nice, and I'm going to give you a copy. That's my only comment.
Chairman, I, I appreciate those comments, and I'm glad everything's online, so we have the information that we need. Although I will tell you that the attorney is very hesitant, because that is an enforcement log. And it is specific to enforcement, and there are laws that protect people and entities when it comes to enforcement. So we have.
Obviously.
Oh, the permits are fine, but the enforcement log is part of that. And so, yeah, so, but what additional information would you like about the permits?
Like this one says who and like where and, and what?
Okay.
Why can't we know that? I, I don't care about the enforcement. You can keep that all a secret. It should be. I was on that list for three months.
I care about the enforcement.
Huh?
I care about the enforcement.
Well, I care about it, but I don't care who or what. I was on there for puppies. I mean, it was stupid.
And if you'd leave us a copy, that would be great.
I'm gonna.
I have a question, follow up on that for the deputy administrator. All that's online, correct?
Yes, it is.
It's under Citizen Serv.
So for those inquiring minds, have your laptop with you.
Any way, you might as well make it informational.
I think the intent, after many years on the commission,
Yes, sir.
was to streamline not totally critical parts of the meeting, because some of them got quite lengthy. And so by the time you got to Joe's dog bit Mary's leg, it wasn't that important.
But, and I, I don't think we need to discuss. I just would like to know who's getting the permits.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that's so difficult.
It's just a click away.
Okay. Then don't bother pretending at all. You have to click on it.
Thank you. I guess Chair Seals had all his comments already.
I guess so.
With no further business at hand, I'm adjourning the meeting unless an objection is raised. Hearing no objection, the meeting is adjourned at 6:54 PM. Notice how fast I talk.